Let's take advantage of the, of some quiet time and we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order.
This conference will now be recorded.
Now we'll call the meeting to order. Thank you for always remembering to record you. We forgot that very, very beginning last time. I think you knew that when you were doing minutes. But you weren't here to start the meeting. We're all out of work.
All out of work.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for attending this evening. Our meeting right before Christmas. So let's, as we go into our moment of silent reflection, we had two local families who lost their homes to fire today or last night into the day. One out near Holbrook's Nursing Home, just a little past it, and then one up way up on the Alexander Road in the southern part of the county. It's a tough time to lose property, especially when you've got kids involved in Christmas presents. So let's keep those families in our thoughts and prayers as we enter into a moment of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We have one, we've got several that signed in, but one that wishes to address the board, or address the board, address the council this evening. Good evening, Mr. Waltz. How are you?
Great. How are you?
Good. Campus is all quiet. Kids have gone home.
I hope so. We're not over there helping anybody. First of all, I'm here representing the Colonial Arts Center Board on behalf of the Board and Councilman Sanders certainly. First of all, I want to provide the mayor and the council thanks. Since the last time we approached council to talk about the Colonial Arts Center Board, and I know Ann is regularly providing updates, but since that time, a number of things have happened in that space just in a very tight group of months. Certainly, the grand opening event, the death by dessert dinner theater that happened a couple of days, the opening of Greg Bradley Popovich's art show, which was a huge success. I believe the largest opening that was ever attended at that facility. Certainly appreciate the management of the Westlake Art Factory you're providing to that, to that space. We hosted a middle school theater troupe and their annual show was held in the Colonial Arts Center, which was really an exciting thing. It certainly served as a hub for a lot of the book type activities. And I was thankful to be a small part of seven sold-out performances of Christmas Story, which happened downtown. We are in the process of approximating the unique visitors to our city for those events, but 1,000 tickets or more were sold to those events. And so I think that's really had a lasting impact. And in January, we will be hosting our first branded educational event as a camp for kids to learn about directing. So it'll be one of the very first things that sort of has been branded as an educational piece. So I wanted to thank you for those opportunities. I don't know that we could have dreamed we would have done so many of those things in that short time. And I think what's so exciting about it, particularly the Christmas Story, was the number of young performers that the place has housed. It's just given a stage to middle school students, to those students, and we're already starting to put some college art into those spaces, giving those college students a space too. So for that, I just want to say on behalf of the Board, thank you. The other reason I'm here certainly is that when I approached council before, Erica Klenich and I had come to talk a little bit about the using two events as a trial, to have a third-party vendor for alcohol in the space. And I wanted to update everyone on those two events. They were that murder mystery event as well as the grand opening event. I can say that both went off without incident. I think they were very successful for the vendor. We had two vendors, very interested third-party vendors in serving. I believe the whistle stop was the one that worked at both events. The only incident we had was at the first one or second one, we didn't have any plates. Thanks to Ambi for solving that problem in short order, learning experiences as we go through it. But again, you know, I think that these types of events will be few. You know, I think there will be opportunities to do those things. But I guess what I'm asking council for, we realize as a Colonial Arts Center Board, that we had asked to do that on a trial basis, that trial has occurred, and wanted to at least ask council for the ability to continue to pursue those when possible. Of course, with all the legal that needs to happen on those kind of things, approval from the Colonial Arts Center Board as a programming standpoint, these would not be things that would be done lightly, but certainly would like perhaps the ability to continue to do that when the opportunity arises.
So I believe the way, so the way it was conducted last time was, the motion was for the trial period. It isn't on our agenda this evening to take a fit of action on. I think what would probably be appropriate, though, knowing that it has gone well, we don't see any issues, we probably could get a good head nod from council if we want to continue it, and we could place it on our, on our January agenda just to formalize it in the, in the minutes that we wish to continue that, that effort moving forward.
Right. Because of the date, the Colonial Arts Center Board doesn't meet again until February, so that would be quite appropriate in that way as we start to consider. There's no imminent programming where alcohol is being requested.
Sure. And it would still be not every event. It would still be depending on the flavor of the event, the audience of the event, the magnitude, all those, all those factors.
And again, continuing to work through a third-party vendor with its own license.
Yep.
Any questions I can answer about that?
I thought, did we just have a discussion about that? I thought we'd already agreed upon extending it to six months and taking formal action. I thought we had.
We took formal action to say that it would be on a trial basis.
And we made that.
And then, and then we would hear back after, at the end of the year, on the few that were on, that were on the books, that were scheduled. And so you provided us with that report. But I think because the nature of the motion was on a trial basis, it would, for parliamentary procedure, again, I think, I don't, I don't think anybody here is wanting to say, you know, wait a minute, no. We can take, we can, we can head nod and say we want to continue, but it probably makes the most sense from a minute standpoint to connect the dots, just to have it be formalized as, you know.
Correct.
Do you remember what month we approved that in, John?
Well, I know that the, I know that the event, the first event was in mid-October, and so I think it was in early October or maybe late September.
Probably September.
Yeah. Would have been one of those meetings.
Actually, okay, wait a minute, I'm thinking. Actually, I think it was, I think it was, it may have even been the last meeting in August.
It could be possible.
Because when I asked for some clarification, it was, I was asking to have that at the meeting of the next, the next Colonial Arts Board meeting, which would have been the first meeting in September, or the first Tuesday in September, which would have been right after Labor Day. So I'm pretty sure it was the very last meeting in August.
And as we understood it, at least from our understanding, we were, the trial was the two events that are turning here at the end of the year. So again, I think approaching it that way would be just fine.
Yep.
I would add, Robbie, that we don't want to micromanage the Colonial Arts Center Board, which is one of our best functioning entities at this point. If you guys decide it's the public school kids doing their annual spring, obviously that would appear to me to not be an appropriate place to be serving beer and wine. But that said, those decisions ought to be made, I think, by the CAC Board.
Well, I think that's, that's what we, that's what we are saying, right? I mean, it would be your discretion as to whether to have alcohol or not. All we're, all we will be doing is granting you the ability to do so moving forward in a more permanent way.
Correct. And if there were ever something that we thought the scope was big enough that required council's thought or attention, or if an incident ever occurred where, again, we thought we needed to revisit it, we would ensure everyone, we would bring that back.
Right. But I think what's important to note here is that there have been no issues. The vendors have participated with us very well. It's, it's a good revenue boost to local vendors. So it's, so win-win-win.
Well, and as we've noted before, Robinson Grand does it, the Palace Theater in Greensboro. A lot of the area venues that are similar to ours, they've been doing this for years. So we're just doing what other places do.
Yeah, we hope it opens up some other opportunities, perhaps a Westlake Board Trustee event, you know, those kind of things where we think, push more things in, into the space where people are using them. So that's the point.
Well, thank you for the report.
I'm welcome.
It was a good fall of events in the theater. Brought a lot of people in. We may want to, I'd like to see maybe from Ann, or maybe she can report on that, and I apologize, I missed the last Colonial Arts Board meeting because of another meeting, but maybe at the one in February, could she provide maybe an attendance record of where we were for the, from 2023, for all the events that we had?
Yeah, it's good to do that. And I think they were, I think she and Keith Buchanan were working on that in tandem. And I know he also has some updates about fundraising. We certainly had good support from, from several different people, and I think that the seat sales continue, which is really great, and having more people in the space helped us pitch that at every presentation that was in there, so that's going to continue.
Well, I just want to mention, John has done a stellar job as President of the Board, and you mentioned at the beginning, a small part in the success of the Christmas Story. You did a wonderful job as the, as the main character through that. I was, I was amazed at your delivery and had a lot to.
Well, it was a special moment for me to see the place come.
Yeah.
It was lit up, it was full of people. People were buying all kinds of vendor items in the lobby that were actually a lot from like places like De Raimi and places in town. And that's sort of the dream we had of this thing, and that's, that's really been neat.
It was hugely successful. I was there to watch the technical part of one, one show, and then I sent the audience another show. It was just, well done.
Right.
Thank you, John.
One, one thing I want to note before you leave, John, is I want to, I want to make mention that this is a, this is a very nice gesture. Ambi Jenkins, she, out of her, out of the goodness of her own heart and out of her own pocket, purchased a seat on, in the balcony of the theater on behalf, that memorializes and honors the Buchanan City Council December 2023. So Ambi, thank you for, for doing that for us as a group in addition to what we've done individually, you know, for, to support it. So Ambi, thank you for that. We appreciate it.
And we'll probably know that the facility would not be up, complete, and done without Ambi's work.
She's put a lot of steps in between City Hall and the theater.
Yeah, our city, our city crews came together. We had our water department, sanitation department, street department largely, city hall staff, Ambi, the Board, all, all made this, made this possible. And, and we, and again, we said we would not be here at all without the forethought from Councilman McCauley, at the time Mayor McCauley, for bringing the opportunity to purchase the, the building itself to us, as well as Bryson Van Nostrand, who really led the, the design of the building and what we see today. So it's been, it's been a long, long coming team effort, and it's, it's a great thing for downtown.
Well, thank you, I'll go next. Thank you very much. Have a good Christmas.
Thanks, Sean. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. John.
What's the charge?
How was it? Two fifty, I think, or three?
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Yep.
There you go.
Poor Ambi's going through her Christmas to pay it back. Shut up. Get that, get that overtime on Christmas Day, Ambi. I tell you, that's the only way you're going to be able to pay for it. But thank you again for, for that. Okay, does anybody else wish to address council? I don't see anybody else's name here circled yes at this time. Matt and Steve, do you want to introduce members of the, of the group?
Yes. They were deciding. It was a little bit of a debate.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
I'll open this here for now. Just real quick before I turn it over to Steve, this is the time of year that we've reserved in the past to recognize the contribution of our VIPS members for their services to the city of Buchanan and our surrounding community throughout the year. I can't say enough good things about these folks. They work so tirelessly at just about every event that we have here in our community, both large and small alike, and give so tirelessly of their time, all, all in the sake of volunteerism. And so I turn to you folks and extend my most heartfelt thank you and appreciation to each one of you fine folks, and thank you for your dedication to the police department and the city of Buchanan. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor, I'll turn it over to Steve, who will give a little background about the contributions of the VIPS service this year, and would like to take a few moments to recognize each of our members.
Sure. Thank you. Hello, Steve. How's it going?
Good.
The VIPS program has been running for nine years now. And you guys aren't tired of me yet, so thank you.
Stay tuned.
Oh, just wait till next year. Ten-year shift.
Ten, that's it. That's the cutoff.
Should we take a vote on this?
Yeah. Later. So we, our members come and go, but we've had, we've got a good core group of, of members with the VIPS program. In 2023, our year starts a little bit odd compared to most places. We start recording stuff in December of 2023, and it runs through November of the following year. Reason behind that is so we can tally hours and figure out what type of presentation we're going to be doing to recognize our members for this meeting. So that being said, the year 2023, we began with seven active members. We had a little bit of churn, deactivation. We trained nine new members, and we're ending 2023 with 11 total active members. So over the course of the years, we average about a dozen, give or take. We've been as high as 18, and in the very first year, our lowest number was five. So we're holding an average, and we're slowly climbing. We continue to follow through with the training that not only matches with the VIPS program, but also is in line with Kalia and the police department. And there are, in the report there, we'll go into the detail, which I don't want to push you guys to sleep, so you can read that a little bit later, but I'll hit the highlights there. We do have a list of the training requirements updated for this year in that packet as well. VIPS were requested and participated in 204 public and private events during the 2023. That includes not only Lumsby, but Strawberry Festival, private organizations, so on and so forth. And we help with traffic control, foot patrols, and just enhance public relations between the community as well as the police department. We were fortunate that we did not have any emergency responses this year, but we did have a couple of public health-related events in regards to helping with flu clinics. There's a complete list of all the events in that packet as well. Overall, we donate, or we volunteered as a group almost 2,800 hours for the year, if you mentally speaking. And if you compare that to the independentsector.org website, they value each volunteer hour, each year they visit that. And based on the current value of the volunteer hour for the state of West Virginia, which is $26.67, you multiply that by the almost $2,800, we've donated almost $75,000 worth of time between the organization. So we like to view that as a savings to the city. That's, over time, you may, may not have to pay depending on the event and whatnot. And those hours are broken down in the packet as well. Before we get to the awards, I'd like to draw your attention to page three of the packet, which talks about the current VIPS members. We've always been a family with VIPS. When we first started this back in 2014, I had reservations about the relationship between the volunteers and the officers. I wasn't sure how the officers were going to view the VIPS members, because it could potentially be cutting down on their overtime, and I wasn't sure just how well the program was going to be received. Over the course of years, the officers have become like family, and us to them, them to us. And any reservations that I had this past year have been completely put to rest based on a couple of events that happened this past fall. And they were events that hopefully, I was hoping I'd never have to deal with. Back in September or October, we had two VIPS members that were involved in a major car accident. And I was one of the first people called. I went to the scene, made sure those VIPS members were taken care of. And when we got to the hospital, every on-duty city officer was waiting for us at the hospital to ensure those VIPS members were okay. Recently, we had one of our VIPS members pass away. And that was very difficult as well. Those officers came and stuck by the VIPS members, and we are truly one huge family at this point. We not, may not be law enforcement trained, or, but everybody inside that building that's a member of the police department is a true family member. I haven't decided if I view these guys as my brothers and sisters, or if I view them as my kids. I haven't had to send any of them to bed without dinner yet, so I'm guessing brothers and sisters, but they are truly, truly family. And I'd like to point out that the member we lost recently was Edward Brandt. He came to us at the beginning of this year. He was one of the new members that went through the CERT program, through the Buchanan Police Academy. He was a glazer by trade. I worked with a company, a glass company out of Fairmont. And he was a responder at 9/11 with the CERT program up there. So he brought with him a tremendous amount of experience, excellent skill sets, and he was just, had a major impact on our organization as a whole. You'll notice that we're all wearing black ribbons this evening. That is in remembrance of Mr. Brandt. Moving on to the Presidential Volunteer Service Award Program, most of our members did achieve some sort of Presidential Volunteer Service Award, either a silver or bronze level. We did not have anybody that achieved gold level. It's been a hectic year for a lot of people. Again, this is a volunteer thing, so family and jobs come first, and I try to encourage that through the program. So I'm very proud of what they did, volunteered during that time period. Unfortunately, we do have some members that are not with us tonight, weren't able to make it, but I'd like to recognize those that are here. Randall Tenney was one of our VIPS members that received the Silver Presidential Volunteer Service Award.
Sorry, Mayor, if I could invite you to help us recognize our president.
Oh, yeah.
If anybody's going to be sent to their room for this one, it's going to be Robin.
I threatened it a couple of times.
Go for the, go for the.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All the way back there.
All the way back.
All the way back.
Hold up your.
Let's hear it first. This direction first. All right. All right, and now, here we go. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Rowan is next up. Did I say Randall had 252 hours?
Yeah.
David Rowan's up next with 323 hours, or 323.75 hours. Thank you, sir.
Hold, hold it up. All right, let's look at this. Noah?
David calls me Sam, so.
Yeah. Here we go. David?
Thanks for what you do.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Vita Siski with 403 and one-half hours. And I'd also like to recognize at this time, Evelyn Siski with 163 and a quarter hour. She's a bronze recipient, and Vita was accepting both of those.
All right. Scrunch, scrunch in here.
Over 500 hours together.
Yeah. And right here. Okay.
Thank you.
Next, moving into the bronze, I've got Andy Cartier with 146 and a half hours. Thank you.
Turn it around.
Get your ups up now.
Got it.
Thank you.
And Robin Simon with 168 hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, Robin. There you go.
All right, right here, please. Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Not with us this evening, Jewel Fisher receives silver with 323 and one-quarter hours, and Alan Nash received bronze with 217 and one-quarter hour.
Nice, but not.
I forgot myself.
Steve Wykoff, who receives the silver award this year, four, I think it's on here. 441. 441 and a half hours. What'd you require for the gold?
$500.
$500. What suppose has ever been done in nine years?
You know, I'm not entirely certain. I know we've had people in the past, including myself and Vita, I believe, David achieved the gold level. Part of my report for next year will be a decade worth of hours in lifetime achievement and stuff like that. There is an option for a lifetime achievement for individuals, but I believe the threshold is 4,000 hours. And that's not just with the VIPS program, that would be any certifying volunteer organization.
All right, Steve.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Right over here. All right, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep it up, keep it up.
And this program, oh, okay. This program was the idea of Matt. It's an excellent program, but obviously, without the support of city council, this program would have gone nowhere. So I really appreciate all the support that the city council provides us, the city in general, not just council, because Ambi, you know.
Well, this is certainly a program that makes us very unique. You know, you just don't find it anywhere else. No, no way, nowhere the way it's run here so well. And, and Steve, you're to be commended for that. I mean, you, you are, you know, we, we outkicked our coverage with you to be the leader of this organization, and this is one of those major pillars that helped our police department and city achieve accreditation and continue to be accredited year after year. So I think we owe all of you, you especially, a big round of applause.
It's easy to do when you have a good group of people.
And you believe in what you're doing.
Yes, we do. Absolutely, absolutely. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Matt.
Hope every, all the VIPS members have a very merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
All right. Ambi, do you want to, do you want to call Jay up now, or how do you want?
Yeah, I can start the report. Jay?
She's going to type me in, Mayor.
Okay.
You're ready for me now?
Yeah, Jerry Arnold is not here. There's, there's not much to report.
Yeah, Jerry Arnold is not here. There's not much to report on his end, no more than we heard last time. So Jerry has started his Christmas festivities a night early. So Ambi, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and give you your balances first before I get into things that Jay and I need to talk to you about with the USDA loan. Balances for enterprise funds, November 30th, 2023. Waste collection, many market checking is $1,369,000. And your CD and savings are at $308,000. And you have the letter of credit, $64,000 bond for the landfill. Water board, many market checking, $1,059,000. Working capital and savings, or we don't have savings anymore, they're all CDs at higher interest rates, $874,000. Sanitary board, many market and checking, $1,044,000. And then your working capital, $459,000. And then stormwater's at $190,000. So I usually report on the Colonial at this meeting, but of course, John was here, so we can check that off. The financing through Citizens Bank is complete, and that was for the radios. And of those radios, some of those were for the VIPS that you authorized. So they have portable, we'll have portable radios as soon as those are delivered. The mobile radios have been delivered. So the financing is complete on that. Mayor signed the documents this week. I'll remind you that it's for $91,152 for those radios. At 5.95% interest rate for three years, and the payments will be $2,771 a month.
And I brought Ambi her early Christmas present. I brought the checks right from the bank, right down to her. She was tickled pink.
Yes, got vendor waiting for the check on the ones. The annual audit for the year-ending 6/30/22 has been completed. And we're segueing right into, they're beginning to exchange information with the auditors for the 6/30/23 audit. We're still working on the PSC reports for the water and sewer. The CPA we have that, we outsource that to because it takes CPA to do some of that part of the financials. I do part of it, he does part of it. Was sick, so he's just now getting better and going back to it. And then I'm still working on the update to the floodplain ordinance with Tom. I'll get him some information on that. But we need to update floodplain ordinance to match some of the wording that FEMA and Homeland Security require for our floodplain ordinance. And Jay is our CER, our manager for the floodplain accreditation. Sort of an accreditation. You get a discount for your insurance by staying in this program. So he's also part of that, can answer any questions if you have any on that. The one thing that Jay's here about, as you know, he's been doing a lot of work with the USDA loan that we're seeking through bond council with the engineers and the architects. So Stacy Karakoff with the USDA has been in conversation with he and I, and we've been working on a feasibility study. And we're still kind of, I think we're finished with, I hope now. We're at the final. But when we had a conversation with her the other day, she wanted to solidify and clarify some information and make sure council was of the understanding because there's a lot of numbers passing around here. And I might update you, the interest rates did go down slightly. We're at 3.75% right now. She wants to get the final report to the USDA National Office before the end of the year. We just kind of tweaked the last feasibility study. And we just need a final report on that, and then that'll go in. But with that, she would like to have minutes that have this information on it for council to make sure that they do understand what's happening with the financing. So if you'll remember, council directed us in October that the maximum they were comfortable with borrowing is at $4 million. This includes the contingencies. So approximately $3.6 million is going to go to the building, plus 10% in contingencies. The city, as you're aware, has $439,000 that will also contribute towards the project, which will make the total project part of this, $4,439,000. Now, that doesn't count what the city has already paid for property and demolition of property. So she wants to confirm with City Council the information's correct. And it'll be in the minutes, not as an approval, but as a, yes, we understand. So in the feasibility study, the $4,439,000 will go toward project cost. $3.636 million will go to develop, $3,636,000 will go to development and construction. 10% contingencies, $364,000. Bond council fees, $47,500. And then interim financing that we're required to do with this first round of interest is, it's over $300,000. She guesstimated it to $391,000. I think it might be a little less than that because I think we'll get some good interest rates once we go to that route. So City Council also understands City of Buchanan will pay for the following costs that may be above, may be above the construction loan. So note council, if you remember, Tom Aiman said note council and bond council. And each one does, has to do the same work as bond council. So you'll be paying $47,500 to note council, which is Steptown Johnson. And then the $47,500 for bond council is in this loan. Any passive construction or overruns or change orders that do not fall within that budget of $4,439,000 would be the responsibility of the City Council. So we don't know right now what, we don't have any idea what the bids will come in at. Once they're receiving an open, if it comes in under, the council would have the opportunity to begin adding the additive alternates. So Jay has in your packet in the back part, so you'll have this, and he can add to this. The additive alternates 1 through 8 has been identified in the contract documents dated November 15, 2023. And the additive alternates, so this building has, you know, pretty much been reduced in what will be presented for bids to the bare minimums. Is that correct?
That is correct. Right now, the base bid consists of a metal building, you know, that can have some additions. You stay right there, Ambi, you're fine. That has some additive, eight additive alternates. And we, Michael Mills with the Mills Group presented that information to us in late October. And we vetted that with the mayor and Randy and Ambi and I. And they developed, and we prioritized the list of alternates that will be added. It is key to remember that the additive alternates must be selected in the order that they are presented, beginning with 1 and going through 8. So say, for example, you wanted to finish and frame out the workout room, which is additive alternate number 5. You must do additive alternates 1 through 4 first before you can select additive alternate 5. You cannot pick those. But the metal building, Michael feels really well, really good, sorry, about the base bid and additive alternates 1 and 2, which puts a brick facade on East Main Street, the side facing City Hall. And then on the eastern side, which is the facade side that faces Stalkard Youth. So it would be a metal building on all four sides with two of those sides having a brick facade that ties in nice with Stalkard and the rest of Main Street. Additive alternate 3 is adding the four-side basketball court so that you can run two youth games at a time sideways. And then, once they're finished, you can raise those rims and then put down the main court and run that way. Alternate 4 is finish the lower-level locker room areas. As it's detailed on the two pages that follow this brief list dated October 20th, we're going to run utilities and gravel, you know, and level out the floors. But they are not going to finish out those lower-level locker room floors unless the money is available. The same goes for alternate 5, which is the finishing and framing out of the locker/ workout space that will be on the first floor that faces Main Street. Added alternate number 6 was the breezeway that connected the Stalkard Youth Building with the multi-use facility that would cover the children and the staff in times of inclement weather. Number 7 was the late add. Once we made our visit to Morgantown this past summer, it was enlarging the storage area and the concession stand since it did add quite a bit, as was presented to you all in our October presentation. So they put that towards the end. And I didn't bring the renderings with me, but we had that drop-off area that was between the two buildings that currently is right where there's that little small parking lot that the staff parks at. That was going to be transitioned into a drop-off area for the bus, as well as parent drop-off and pickup. That was added last. But we just wanted to make sure that you all were aware that it has been stripped down to the bare minimums with some vital activity, equipment, and specialty items added to that. The Mills Group feels, like I said previously, real good about the main bid and additive alternates 1 and 2 coming in under that $3.6 million. But then after that, we'll just have to see how the bids play out. Ambi stressed it. I'm going to stress that a little more, Randy. It's a little homework assignment after this because Stacy wants to submit this to Washington before the end of the year. If we could just sum up this City Council meeting and submit it to them, to Stacy for submission no later than that, next week, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sure.
And Ambi hit all the high points. I didn't have to do a lot of talking. But I'll answer any questions that you all may have.
Jay, who established that the alternates must be in chronological order? Does that USDA require them?
That is, yes, we checked with that. If, Dave, you can remember, we had Kelly here on the engineering side. If it's an engineering project, it's kind of the same way. We had the Mills Group look into it to confirm that additive alternates must be selected in the order that they are listed.
So was the order of the alternates established by Mills Brothers then?
No, there was a list. They presented us, you know, with what we were wanting to do, the things. And, you know, he said, if we strip this out, it could save this much. If we strip that, so this developed into a list, Dave. And then, once that was there, the four of us kind of prioritized, reviewed it and said, okay, we know what we definitely want, the brick facades, that we don't have a metal building up on Main Street. And then we know that, you know, the activities down in the gym floor area were kind of high on everybody's list. So it just kind of went that way, you know, and that's how it was developed.
So to be clear, in my mind, as we go about bidding this project, and if two years down the pipe, we still haven't managed to finish what I think is a critical component of this facility, which is the breezeway connector, we could still do that in-house.
Oh, absolutely.
Or a separate contractor or whatever outside of the USDA stuff. If we want more basketball rims and we got 20 extra thousand bucks to do it, we can do that outside of the scope of...
Yeah, that's more part of the consideration.
Right, is what we can do.
The discussions the mayor and myself and the others have. What items could be done in-house?
That is correct, Randy. You know, what we felt comfortable with, the drop-off area, the storage area in the back, you know, all we've got to do is pour a foundation and put some block walls up and a lean-to roof. Those are things that we can do in-house. So that's why they were kind of pushed to the bottom because we wanted to get the contractor with all their equipment and manpower, get them to get the big items, so they're leaving us with the smaller ones.
I would be amazed if any of us didn't think that the mission is to get this building up. And these other things, whether we can afford them initially or not, will fall into place in the time to go.
Right. And the key was to get the building in. And I would really like to see, you know, and I believe it will, but definitely a brick facade on the East Main Street side. And then, that's why those two got there, but definitely on the Main Street side.
That's great. It's terrific. Thank you for clarification.
In a perfect world, we'd get a brick on all fours on it.
Yes.
And that may happen somewhere.
Yeah.
Everybody understands that and...
The key part being anything over 4.439 is going to be the responsibility of, during the construction, you know, the initial construction phase.
That's in this, what is that figure again, Jay?
It's in my notes.
It's in your notes, okay. Yeah, because that's obviously... You've given me a nice insert here. I mean, it's basically what the minutes are going to be. But I guess, you know, just for the sake of the minutes, as a reporter, I'll ask if there's any council member present that has any questions or doesn't quite understand what was discussed. Speak up now, otherwise I'll assume everybody is concurred that they understand the presentation.
And is it 40-year loan or 30-year?
30.
30.
Be around for that final payment, I might be.
Ambi will be.
Should be at her desk.
Petrified right there.
What were you saying?
Nothing important. Just a couple other things on your agenda, Mayor. F1, I didn't get around to finishing that. I did review everything in the budget.
Ambi, Ambi, Ambi.
Well, I'll tell you what, she was up in front of CJ Maggie's this morning. I told her to get to work, but I mean...
I was at the bank. I was going to say business.
What'd you go, CJ Maggie's?
What time was she there, Robert?
I was dropping money off at the bank.
I mean, there's not that much difference between 6:00 AM and 7:00 AM.
That's right. Now she's really got to work Christmas Day.
So you can drop that off the agenda. The other thing while Jay's here, on F2, I don't know if you want to take that up or not.
Sure, absolutely.
What are we dropping off the agenda?
F1.
F1, I don't have it.
It's not complete yet, so we think by the first meeting in January.
And it's actually better because what I'm doing is reviewing the budget for the, you know, I'm six months here at the end of December.
Hard to believe, we're already six months in. And then, you know what happens, you know what happens next? Budget sessions.
So what was that, F1?
F2, while Jay's here, it is an amendment to the professional service agreement between the City of Buchanan and Region 7 Planning and Development Council. It's about the GIS services hourly rate increase. There's a letter here. The request is to take it from $55 an hour to $65 an hour. Jay, you want to highlight anything?
Yes, Mayor, you've hit that pretty well. That's nothing, the services that they have provided are not going to change. It's merely the hourly rate. That rate has remained, unlike some of us, you know, the rate has remained the same for Region 7, providing those services for six years. And, you know, they are due for this increase. I actually thought it was going to be more. But, you know, because the region provides fantastic services, the water department takes advantage of it, I do, the sewer department, and the street department as far as we've got about half of the cemetery mapped with pictures of all the graves and grave sites. And what we're wanting to do there is being able, that I could type in my last name and all the Hollands would pop up and we could find them rather quickly. And it would be a GIS app that you could just hit it, type it in, and it would drop a pin on your phone. And you could drive, if you're from out of town, you could drive right to that and walk right to that grave site. So we're kind of working on that. But it's just to continue the services that we are having, currently have with them. And they're just asking that we, you know, be mindful of current cost of living and inflation prices and ask for a $10 increase on the hour. Right now, last year, we spent just over $70,000 on all their services. So we're looking at $600 a month, you know, and that's normally split between water and sewer for the majority, and then I have a little bit of work on my design side that they do that. But that's what it's averaging, about $600.
And that's the only change in the agreement?
The only change in the agreement is to go from $55 an hour consulting fees to $65 an hour consulting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Sanders. We have a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, we'll call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
We'll put that in Jerry's box for the sun. I believe that's it. I want to wish you all a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Years, and we'll do it again next year.
Thank you, Jay.
And that's all I had to report to. Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
We'll lock up.
You're polite, right?
All right. Police Chief Matt Gregory, back again.
Back again.
And while you're up, Matt, if you want to, at the end of your report, we'll just go ahead and take up item F3. That's the task force update.
Okay, sure. Well, just a few things, Mayor, to update council tonight. Steve had mentioned earlier during his presentation that next year will mark the 10-year anniversary of our VIPS organization. With that, we do have a number of activities planned to commemorate that milestone to include recruitment drives and different types of recognition for about 10 years of service. So there'll be more to report on... So there'll be more to report on that as we move forward into next year. Just a couple of other things, the police department has become aware of uptick in thefts in the downtown area. As a result of this, officers have stepped up their investigations and have been able to make a number of arrests in response to these thefts. On a proactive front, officers continue to conduct business checks for our businesses throughout the city at varying times throughout the week, from one week to the next. Officers have also stepped up their foot patrols in areas that have experienced higher incidents of crime. And this is again, a result, this proactive activity has resulted in some success in solving these cases. The only other thing, Mayor, that I have, on January 17th, 2024, the police department will sponsor Narcan training for our officers and members. This will be in conjunction with the new Kalia standard that focuses on Narcan delivery as we prepare to update our policy manual in response to the standards change. And Mayor, that's all I have for my regular report.
Any questions for Chief Gregory?
Thanks, Chief.
More of a comment than a question, but I particularly want to, reading in the paper about the fellow who ripped the stuff off from the still city-owned but college-leased street garage property, and I guess he was caught on camera.
He was.
Red-handed, so to speak. Anecdotally, we all know the situation, we have such a tremendous community, which are great downtown, but in the wee hours, there's this seamy underbelly about us. When these guys are on their bikes at midnight or later, point of demonstration, I was 300, 400 steps shy of hitting my 8,000-step mark, which is my new goal, since I'm an old coot now. And I was, it was, it was five till 12. I decided to walk up Main Street toward the college and get my steps in. Couple of these guys on bikes go flying by with the backpacks and the whole bit, those guys aren't serving midnight snacks, meals on wheels, but there's, there's something up with these characters. So I applaud whatever effort you guys can, as you already have affected, it's, it's definitely a step in the right direction. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. F3, we need to basically signal our hand of approval of a modification to the Mountain Region Special Response Team Agreement. This formally included the city of Buchanan Police Department, Upsher County Sheriff's Department, Barber County Sheriff's Department, Randolph County Sheriff's Department and Elkins City Police Department. This new agreement includes all the, all of those, as I mentioned, except for the city of Elkins's police department. So a new agreement would need to be memorialized, including the singular city department being Buchanan and then the three other sheriff's departments in our region. So Matt, I'll let you take it from there.
Yeah, this is a revisiting of the agreement that we've had in place for a few years now. The, the original agreement, in fact, had expired, so it was timely to revisit a, a new agreement. The language was changed a little bit to mirror, or to better mirror the language that is established in the Mountain Region Drug Task Force, which includes many of the same counties that is part of the Special Response Team. That new language was given to City Attorney Tom O'Neil, who reviewed it and reported back that he had no issues with it. This new agreement will be taken up by the board made up of representatives from each of the aforementioned agencies in January. So we are seeking council's approval for, once this board meets next month and signs said agreement, we're seeking council's approval for me to enter into that agreement next month. Our commitment will remain the same as it has in the past, and that is providing hostage negotiators, which includes myself and Corporal Angel McCauley, who became certified in hostage negotiations here in the last year, as well as general mutual aid to each of our, that we enjoy from the other agencies and we extend to these of the partner agencies as well. And so we're just seeking council's approval to move forward with that.
I move we approve the amended Mountain Region Special Response Team Agreement. Second?
A motion by Mr. Rylands, a second by Mr. McCauley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Merry Christmas.
And Matt, you'll be sticking around for our, we have an executive session this evening for personnel matters, as well as Mr. O'Neil. Mr. O'Neil has joined the podium and he has a really nice announcement for us that Mr. Sanders and I have sworn to secrecy, but no more, so Mr. O'Neil, take it away.
So, yeah, so members of council, we have a, we have an executive session on a personnel matter tonight, which is pretty important to discuss, but for now, I have a Christmas surprise for the council. I went to Charleston yesterday to pick up the first of what I think will be a half a dozen or so checks made payable to the city of Buchanan. This check is in the amount of $113,459.59, and it represents the first payment to the city for its share of the opioid settlement proceeds. So that is, so I'll.
Thanks for that.
Take, well, or hell, I mean, depending on how you look at it, I mean, really. But, but this represents, this represents the first payment to the city. We should be, we probably can get five or six more in the coming years, about once a year. We do not know what the future amounts will be, this represents two years worth. And let me share that with the mayor here and.
You don't have trouble with money, right?
Now, well, that's, let me say this, this money is not, this is not general, this is not for the general fund. This money has to be put into a segregated account that is subject to audit by the Attorney General. There was an announcement made earlier today that the Attorney General has delegated that auditing authority to the state auditor's office to, I guess for, because they know, because they know how to audit and the Attorney General's office really doesn't. That, there are also, so it's going to be put in a segregated account, it can only, also only be spent on certain items, certain matters that are related to the abatement of opioid issues in the community. There will be, there have been, there's been some guidance issued, there will be more issued in the coming months, which we'll certainly review with the council. But in the meantime, and, you know, it could be law enforcement, it can be treatment, it can be supplies, they can pay for Narcan, it can, it could pay for training for law enforcement for the community, there are.
How about counseling?
Yes, it can, it can pay for counseling, there's a, there's a wide variety of things that that money can pay for. It just has to be related to the settlement. There's a, there's a lot of red tape associated with those funds that we'll be kind of diving into in the coming months, but I wanted to make sure that that check was here for tonight to make sure that we had it in hand and Merry Christmas.
Well, thank you. I'm with you on your efforts on staying on top of this.
Well, thanks, it's about six years worth of work.
You know, I listen to the radio quite a bit and there was a lot of comments that the Attorney General had failed and not done what he should have done, but my understanding was that West Virginia, for capital, got the best settlement of all of the states.
I, I don't want to comment, I'm not in a position to comment on that.
Well, that's what.
Right, but, you know, I think, you know, this, this was nationwide litigation, and of course, you're, I'm sure you're aware of the foundation that was established, made up of county, municipal and other political subdivisions in the state. We actually have a meeting of our region's board that is going to take place in late January, received notice about that the other day. Our region is kind of north central, is basically north central West Virginia, and I think the meeting's going to take place in Morgantown, but we'll, we'll receive some guidance out of that group on, on ways to spend that. Each of those regions is, is also receiving its own share of funds, so, but this is money for the city to apply either on its own or in collaboration or coordination with other political subdivisions and organizations to address the problems associated with opioid abuse in our community. So I think that money can do a lot of good.
Maybe first quarter of the year, you'll be able to give us more guidance?
Oh, clearly, yes, absolutely, absolutely. But for now, that just came in and I just wanted to share the good news, you know, so to be good.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Appreciate you driving down to Charleston to pick that up.
Yep.
There you go.
Give this to Ambi. Yes, that's exactly where it goes.
We'll never see it again.
We're really giving her a hard time this evening.
She's giggling a lot.
Yeah.
Anything that makes you laugh, right?
All right, couple of quick items before we get down to council comments and announcements because we have dispensed with our strategic issues for this evening. We have, under Correspondence and Information, the city of Buchanan call for election in 2024 was voted on and passed last meeting, which has been circulated through local media sources since that meeting. We have a notice of a special joint working session with the Buchanan City Planning Commission as well as city council members. That will be a public meeting, there will be an agenda established for both Planning Commission and the city council. That will be on the 11th of January, that is a Thursday evening. We do not have a city council meeting regularly scheduled for that evening, and it will be at 7:00 PM here at city council chambers to discuss further collaboration regarding planning priorities. And then we also have the report of the cat and dog activity from the commission for the month of November. Under the consent agenda, we need to approve E2, E3, E4 and E5. We have the approval of the building and wiring permits, the approval of the payment of our bills. I also would like to present to you an appointment to the Stockard Youth and Community Center Board of Directors to fill an unexpired term from West Virginia Wesleyan College. That person would be Jessica Vincent. Jessica is one of the leads in the Community Engagement Center at the college, she would be an excellent fit for the board, she has agreed to serve. Also, an appointment to an unexpired term to the Buchanan City Historic Landmarks Commission, that would be a one Daniel Green. Danny is a history buff, lives on Camden Avenue and is the owner of the Howard Heiner classic photo collection that he has shared so, so generously out on social media. So Danny has agreed and is really, is really excited to serve on that board. So would you please approve the consent agenda E2 through E5? So moved?
Second.
If a motion by Mr. Rigor, a second by Mr. Rylands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Would you spell Jessica's last name?
Sure, it is V.I.N.
V is in.
V is in vigor. V.I.N.C.E.N.T.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we are down to council comments and announcements. Reminder, we do need to have an executive session relative to personnel matters. We are missing Pamela Buckler this evening, so we'll begin with Mr. McCauley.
Thanks, Mr. Skinner. Could, could we add to personnel matters and property matter updates as well? I mentioned this, I think it was a meeting that you had to duck out on or something after you were, during the first part of the meeting, about the need for us to give some serious consideration to succession plans for some of our key city personnel. Since the time I was mayor, Jerry Arnold's got on his phone, he hits the one button on the app and he can tell you how many, you know, weeks, days, hours, minutes, seconds he's got left until he can take retirement. With his accrued vacation time and all that other stuff, it's just about a year and Jerry's going to be out of here. So I think it's something that we need to be mindful about. You don't, you don't want to wait till this time next year when Jerry's in his last month to, I guess we, the way I would envision it, it's up to the rest of the council, of course, there would be a period that the person that we were going to hire would be on board and would be mentored by Jerry and shown the ropes, particularly if it was not an in-house person. And a similar kind of an exercise, I sure appreciate Ambi's 47 years of service, but we, we know she's not going to be here forever and as we get to that point where Ambi projects on out in time that, okay, this is going to be it next year or whatever, I just think it's important that we be mindful of having these key players mentoring their successors.
Mr. Sanders and I have already had several conversations with Mr. Arnold as well as Ambi and I have begun to have conversations ourselves. So there, I don't think we are at the point yet, particularly with Ambi, as to the correct direction to go. We all know Ambi wears way too many hats, but we're appreciative of all the hats that she does wear, but we have a couple of ways that we can, we can slice that pie, that is Ambi's responsibility plate. We just, we need to kind of, we need to devise a plan for that. Ambi has not shared a, an, an official ending date, but, but that conversation has begun. But Jerry, you're correct, has indicated a date at which he will be wanting to exit, and so that, those conversations have had, have happened much more frequently and started earlier. And Mr., as I said, Mr. Sanders and I have both talked to Jerry, we've, we've sat down and met with him about our thoughts and his thoughts about what that position looks like moving forward. Because if you'll also recall, Jerry, we did not replace the waste department supervisor upon retirement, so we, we appointed Jerry into that position out of a, a small pay bump for him to serve in dual roles, so to speak. So, so we need to be reminded that with Jerry leaving as Director of Public Works in the near future, so will the waste department need to be looked at as well.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have, other than I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy 2024.
Yep. Thanks, sir. Jack?
Well, thrilled at the success of the CAC and the way things are going there, I think it's tremendous for the community. And to quote Ambi, Ambi's the star tonight, I guess, quality of life, and it certainly adds to the quality, quality of life here in Buchanan. Of course, the VIPS, the Pete folks, the volunteers and their accomplishments and their self-sacrifice for our communities are really tremendous. Today's the first day of winter, this is the shortest day of the year, so tomorrow the days will start getting a lot.
It's very good.
That's always a positive. It's good shit, man. So you guys have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
My brother's excited to come back, back to the South here, living in Vermont, he'll be here for, for, for Christmas in Vermont because he's in Burlington, they're so far north, it doesn't, at this time of year, it doesn't get light until a little after 10 o'clock in the morning and it's, it gets dark again around 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So it could always be worse. So, thank you, sir. Merry Christmas to you. All right, Mr. J. David Thomas, what do you have for us?
Well, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and I really appreciated the VIPS presentation, they're very dedicated and Steve has done a wonderful job over the years and I know he'll keep it up. And I appreciate everybody that reported this evening and you all have a great Christmas and a great New Year, students.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Mr. Rylands?
I'd like to thank all the people that are working to make this the community that it is and hope that they continue those efforts and wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
it is and hope that they continue those efforts and wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sanders?
Just a couple of things, I was able to take a couple of days, go to Charleston, South Carolina last week and visit some friends. I was with five individuals in particular that all have been to Buchanan. They've all visited Buchanan over the past couple of years and we had, a big part of our conversation was Buchanan and just how much they love the community. Two from, two from South Carolina, well, four, three, four from South Carolina, one from Tennessee. So it's just wonderful to have those kind of relationships and to keep up with people around the country that have visited Buchanan on a regular basis, actually. That's number one. Number two, I gather, I want to thank everyone at the VIPS, the Clonan Arts Center, just so proud to be on that board and to see that come into a reality now. It's really a tremendous facility, so I encourage anyone who hasn't been to the CAC, Clonan Arts Center, please make a point to go there. And then also want to point out, the mayor talked about correspondence, a notice of a special joint working session of the Buchanan Planning Commission and City Council on January eleventh. Sometimes we make comments here about we need a plan for this or we need to be concerned about that, and I think we sometimes forget that the Buchanan Planning Commission has a lot of those same discussions and they bring a lot of great ideas to us and we're able to implement those ideas. So this is an opportunity to meet with that group and we can ask them to explore some other possibilities and we're interested in them to, in them exploring going forward at the Planning Commission. So make your notes, you know, have, be ready for a good discussion. Buchanan Planning Commission, they have been responsible for, I tell you, they were really responsible for the creation of the Parks and Recreation Board, which has been a huge success this year, I think. So those are the things I wanted to point out. Merry Christmas. I feel very blessed to be here in Buchanan and to be able to, you know, contribute a little bit along the way and to work with all of the wonderful people I work with. So Merry Christmas, everyone, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Well, I can't add anything more than what my colleagues have added, except for, again, sincere thanks to all of our employees that make our organization so wonderful. It's been a great Christmas season so far. We've had some nice events. If you didn't have a chance to go down to the, the Baxa Inn Christmas event, it was, it was a great job once again this year. Good, good repeat performance by the, by Burma. So they did a great job and, you know, we've, we've, we've become a little Christmas haven here. We're well known around the region for always having an event going on, no matter what your, what your preference is, whether it's a historical Christmas like Charles Dickens or a more kid friendly event like the, this year's Christmas in Fairyland. So I agree with Mr. Rylands, it's our volunteers and all the folks that are working hard every day to make Buchanan City that it is. I think we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge our community has some significant challenges right now, but we are, I feel, I feel that we have a lot of people that are, that are willing to, and have expressed that they are here for the long haul to, let's, let's, let's pick up, let's, let's, let's pick up the banner, let's, let's pick up the, the heavy load and carry us forward as we work toward solving some of our complex issues here in our community to remain one of the, one of the very best small towns in America to live, work and play. So thankful for everybody on this table and for our community. With that, a very Merry Christmas to everyone.